Afternoon, everyone. Now four o'clock. And I'll call the Young Planning Commission meeting to order. Of staff, would you please call and roll for us?
Carlos Perez.
Here.
Commissioner Bob Howard.
Here.
Commissioner John Graver.
Here.
Commissioner Richard Lumsdale.
Here.
Commissioner Ann Warman.
Here.
Commissioner David Johnston.
Here.
And Commissioner Austin Walker is excused.
Very well, so we have. Yeah, they're missing him. Okay. Let's go to item agenda number three, please stand for the public.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Then item number four, has everyone had an opportunity to read the attached minutes?
Yes.
Do I hear the motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make the motion to accept the minute from the last meeting.
The motion has been approved and seconded with the approval of the minutes from our last meeting.
Everyone needs to say aye.
Oh, of course. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? I'm here, the motion is passed. Agenda item number five, city staff communications, are there any new communications?
Uh, nothing major, except that we will be coming forward probably pretty soon after. This is all concluded to look at a rezone over at Berry Valley.
Look at what?
A rezone.
Oh.
Berry Valley area. That'll probably be the next big thing. That's all.
And then I did want to follow up with you, Carlos, you had a couple of questions at the last meeting.
Yes.
Um, the conversation is continuing. So, um, what we found out is we reached out to, uh, the Department of Transportation, um, and asked them, you know, what? Why isn't there a median there or would it be permissible to put one there? Um, so the conversation started, we talked with, um, Captain Russell of the Southeast Thurston Fire. Um, and we learned that the light does not have a opticom device. Um, basically what that is, they uh, it registered when you have blinky lights, um, recognizing fire trucks, uh, police cars, um, and it'll turn that light green to get the emergency vehicle through. Um, back in the day, uh, it used to be manual out of the old firehouse.
Wow.
Um, so it's not done that way anymore and, um, putting a median there would prevent the fire truck from swerving around, stop cars and they kind of make their way through the intersection. Um, so there's kind of a two part to that. Um, was that will be coming out in the near future, we don't have a date scheduled yet. Um, but they are going to take a look at the light and see, uh, if it's feasible to put that device up. Um, which will help one our EMS and, um, you know, help our response times, but two, um, it would allow, you know, the potential of putting a median in there, so, uh, things are moving more to come on that, but I wanted to follow up.
Well, thank you. One other thing, you know, uh, as, uh, something different that you might do instead is just put some kind of a sign there on the right saying no left turns into Tim's Pharmacy or something like that, that might also be an option.
Yeah, all options are on the table.
Okay.
But, uh, yeah, kind of figuring out what we can do, so thank you for bringing it up and, uh, we're, we're absolutely looking into it, so.
Thank you, Drew. Alright then, uh, let's go on to, uh, public comments, which is item, agenda item number six. If there's anyone in the audience, and there is no audience, so there's no need to go any further with that. Item number seven. Uh, staff, or there, is there any unfinished business from the last meeting other than what you just told us, Drew, Gary?
Done there?
Wow, this is going to be a nice meeting. Alright, uh, that was seven, number eight is, uh, reporting any new business. Uh, that, and these will be listed on the agenda, alright. New business?
Uh, yes, so that'll be the updates to the Unified Development Code. So, um, yeah, so the new business, allow residential development in existing residential areas of CBD. Uh, eliminate the maximum density requirements for mixed use developments in the central business, commercial and industrial districts. Establish bicycle parking requirements, establish off-street parking requirements. Allow entertainment and recreation venues in the CBD C1, C2, C3, and industrial zones. Uh, including definitions to establish consistency with the new code language. And include hyperlinks to make the Unified Development Code more comprehensive. That will be addressed in the public hearing.
Very well. That being said, uh, it is not time to open the hearing, I suspect. So let's go on, proceed with that. It is, uh, you got them. Agenda item number nine. Uh, today's hearing is, oh, well, let me open it first. Uh, today is Monday, August nineteenth, and I'm opening the Planning Commission Public Hearing at four oh six. And it's on the proposal for the updates to the Unified Development Code that Drew just addressed, you know, referenced in that agenda item, right? I'll open the floor for public testimony. There's anyone here wishing to speak this afternoon, please click on the raised hand button on your computer screen if you're doing it that way, or come to the podium and please give your name and address for the record.
Go online.
Go online, very well. Does anyone, uh, on the commission have any questions or comments regarding the updates?
I just wondered if there are any other, um, uh, edits or changes that were made since the last time you went through this for us?
Uh, not since the last time we went through this, um, it's all consistent with what we, uh, with what we did last time.
Anyone else?
It, it all seems pretty straightforward, um, can you just go through the various elements that you want to change and kind of explain like what the problem is you're trying to solve?
Uh, so there's, there's a lot of them. We can go through, there's a couple of ways we can do this, we can go through each chapter.
Um, yeah, you could do broad stroke.
So, uh, in, I have it up on the director up there.
Yep.
So within the permitted uses of the CBD, um, we have. PDF version, give me one moment.
Thank you for enlarging that. It'd be difficult.
Alright, I'll do my best to keep it up there, um, so just referencing eighteen point six, four point oh four zero for mixed use developments, there's a whole chapter uh, dedicated to that, and we wanted to make it easy to access. Um, the next one, recreation and entertainment venues are not specifically defined, uh, in our code as in this, as an acceptable use, so now it will be, uh, defined in our code that way. Uh, the addition, the big one in the CBD is the addition of duplexes, townhomes, multifamily, uh, live-work structures, uh, parking facilities and single-family residents, um, within the CBD. And creating restrictions on where those can be. Um, as we talked about, there's four different kind of quadrants within the CBD that are, uh, about a hundred and sixty feet away from, uh, you know, so duplexes, townhomes, and multifamily that are not mixed-use developments may be located on lots that are at least a hundred and sixty way feet away from an arterial or collector, measured from the nearest parcel boundary to the center line, and may only be located on lots uh, point two acres or smaller in size. Uh, so adding that service oriented uh, and retail must provide short-term bicycle parking, um, and then defining what those requirements are in eighteen point five four, uh, uh, oh three oh. Uh, as well as some long-term bicycle parking requirements, uh, eliminating the maximum density requirement for the CBD, uh, because we found that parking will be, uh, kind of the self-restriction on that. Um, and reducing the units, the average density units per acre from twenty to sixteen, which is consistent with all of the other, uh, mixed-use development in all the other zones.
Can I throw something in there?
Yes.
Because I mean, what really triggered our changes with that whole, uh, point two acre lot thing, um, it's just acknowledging that there are some parts of the CBD that are residential and are likely going to remain residential that are not located on the main drags and that which were pretty much undevelopable under other standards that were requiring.
That's what I was getting at.
And so we're just trying to, it, it's a kind of convoluted little formula we have there.
Yeah, that was a hundred and sixty feet back.
From the, from, what is it, first and, and, you know.
Yeah, basically five oh seven, uh, and five ten.
So it's, it's, it delineates a really specific area where it's residential, it's really hard to imagine it being developed commercial in the foreseeable future, so we're trying to accommodate a little bit more flexibility for duplexes.
Kind of stagnant development right now because you can't.
Yeah, I mean, we had, you know, I guess the first brothers were the ones that sort of came in and, uh, we're trying to develop and meet our minimum densities for, I can't even remember, it might have been a triplex or something like that, but just with our parking requirements and density and everything else, it just wasn't working with the lot sizes, so we tried to do a workaround.
And what were those properties now that they want to develop?
Uh, one is a single-family resident that, um, they'd prefer to replace it with a duplex.
So this is primarily about two properties that?
Uh, well, it's impacting several properties, um, I don't have a specific number of the parcels. Um, but there are several sections of, or areas of the CBD that are, like Gary said, residential and likely to remain. The first property is one of them. Um, and, you know, we've been kind of looking at how we can make this, um, feasible for about the last eight months, um, playing with different um, lengths from center line and different, um, you know, yeah, just those different requirements. It was one that triggered it, but we looked at it and it made a lot of sense to do that and, and you know, more than just one of those areas, so.
So what this does is it allows utilization of some of the properties that currently haven't had any new uh, upgrades to their residential things to be able to put in, say a duplex or a townhome structure. And probably where they couldn't have developed it before on the current.
Correct, this is a lot of, mostly every time they would run into issues with not enough room for parking requirements.
You guys first.
Or in, to not able to meet the density requirement of twenty units per acre.
Do you foresee a lot more of these particular types of buildings going in? What? I'm just wondering, is it easier to do an administrative variance for two property than change the entire code?
We don't have various criteria for that kind of a thing. All we have for variances are basically setback type things.
Alright.
Um, Andrew did put together a map a while ago that kind of showed the areas, you know, they're like, I'd call them like little sub neighborhoods that potentially, you know, over time could maybe redevelop into duplexes and things like that. I don't see there being a big onslaught.
Right.
Does that sound fair to you?
Absolutely. Were there any question, any more questions on that, or, uh?
Could, could you scroll? Structures again?
Uh, yes, that's actually in the definitions, um, on it's bottom of the last pages there.
It's thirty-six.
Facility where it's got like a retail or, uh, service facility underneath and like an apartment. Correct. There are a number of those in Lacey and. We're able to find that in?
Yes, and I'm pleased that we're getting that in there.
Um, so we're in the C one and, uh, just adding the ability for parking facilities, the live-work structure, recreation and entertainment. Is any other changes in that? Oh, nevermind, uh, again, adding the bicycle requirements.
Gary, in the, not the last meeting, the meeting before that, um, I had brought up about the parking or the, the back of the building, um, and you'd mentioned that, uh, you guys were going to look at the parking or the in- entrances to the, the buildings and instead of having the entire back of the building against Yelm Avenue that, you know, having like a requirement for a door or something to make it, you know, a little more appealing, you know, because with the new, uh, building that they're putting over, um, by the, uh, I can't remember what it's called, uh, yeah, uh, well, not, not by the bank, uh, but over by the, uh, by the trail. Um,
Oh, yeah.
But, you know, since it's got the back, you know, right butt up next to the sidewalk, if, if that's included in some of these changes, because I know that the, the it had been changed to where the parking was moved on the opposite, away from the main drag. But if there was any, if it was looked at any further to include.
I don't want to steal Andrew's thunder, so.
Feel free to steal it if you want. Uh, yeah, so I, I just skipped over that one on by accident, but, um, so back in the CBD chapter, um, there's actually on number six, it says building entries must have direct, direct access to the public sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, adding a redundancy, uh, as number nine and stating if, uh, if a building fronts Yelm Avenue, the building must provide at least one entrance that fronts Yelm Avenue.
Okay.
Um, to you know, ensure that our, you know, our central business district and especially along the Yelm Avenue corridors, you know, welcoming and friendly and you have the fronts of buildings and not.
Appreciate it, thank you. Doesn't necessarily have to be the main entrance, but, you know, because the main entrance might be off the parking lot, but definitely just for pedestrian oriented type structures, we want people to be able to walk on the sidewalk and walk into the building without having to walk around, so.
Appreciate it, thank you. And then within the C, C one through C, C three and industrial, um, it's really all identical, um, and the changes there. Um, just making sure that we are providing bicycle parking. Um, adding the recreation, entertainment venues and the live-work structures.
And I I'm, I'm certainly not clear at all, and it doesn't matter. Between long-term bicycle and short-term bicycles. Uh, I mean, is there a time limit?
There's your bike. There's no time limit, but, um, if you think of security, so if you ride your bike up to a, a business, um, having some short-term bikes, bike racks where you can chain it to, you know, something, um, versus long-term par- uh, bicycle parking would be similar to like a storage locker, um, that's provide, it just provides more security because you're likely to leave it there for a longer period of time.
Great.
We'll be geared more toward like apartment complexes.
Right.
Someplace they can pull it in.
Yeah.
So I'll jump down to the parking. No, I forgot my mouse. And then off-street parking, so if you notice in Yelm right now, there's a a lack of bicycle parking facilities, uh, so including, um, within our code, we want to encourage people to take different modes of transportation, including bicycles. And hopefully that will decrease the need for motor. The owner of the property used for parking and reloading shall maintain such area in good condition without holes and free of all dust, trash, and other debris. Uh, failure to perform such maintenance will be declared a nuisance as adopted in Title Eight Health and Safety. We include that in your packet, uh, just so you know what you, what your recommendation, um, basically the, the full recommendation in its entirety, um, so at least you can take a look and see if that's something that you would like to.
So that's to prevent any future young candidates.
Correct. Uh, and it gives us a, a really good, because we, we already have, um, procedures for nuisances, um, based on like unsafe buildings. So this is kind of a, a rinse and repeat and applying it to, um, parking facilities because, uh, there is a real risk of people and citizens damaging and hurting themselves by driving through potholes or, you know, wrecking their car and, um, yeah, trying to prevent Adrian Canyon. A lot of these, um, parking requirements are used in the Olympia Municipal Code, um, and kind of seeing how they work for us, so that's where they, uh, originated from. Uh, this also touches on drive-through standards, uh, currently we don't have any. Um, where you don't have any stacking requirements, um, and it becomes a challenge to talk with development and because there's no real, uh, footing for us, so we really did dug in a lot and did, uh, pretty extensive research on how many stacking spots we need for each, uh, use, uh, including banks, uh, or financial institutions, pharmacies, fast food restaurants, um, to ensure that those vehicles aren't being stacked up on Yelm Avenue or adjacent streets. Um, it also provides some uh, requirements for how wide they need, or how long a space is, um, defined, and also how wide, um, because you can have some.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just had something occur to me, it's KFC, for example. That kind of depending which way people decide to go, you know? It, is it possible to say, uh, like have a, uh, I know the way that kind of seems to be the, the best is that, you know, where, where they kind of continue around the, the parking lot, like maybe in front of, uh, subway and, you know, kind of a wide swing versus, you know, some people trying to come across directly in front of KFC, but can you do, uh, can you have like something to where they could put like a, um, in a situation like that to where it's kind of questionable which way to go and, and some people don't really totally think, but, uh, like have an outline or a lane uh, painted. You, you know, I mean, just so it gives people an idea, okay, this is the way that you're supposed to go, I mean, then that way you can get the number of cars that you're trying to, because if they go this way, they're only going to get so many cars, but if they take the longer way around, you're going to be able to get more cars. I mean, is that?
Yeah, and that's, I, I think that's the root of the, the the root of that problem is because there wasn't a standard for how many parking, um, how many stacking would be, or how many stacking spaces were needed, um, with the update, I don't know if it, I don't think it impacts KFC right now, um, but you know, making it, designing it in a way that stacking lanes shall not interfere with parking spaces, driving aisles, uh, loading spaces or internal circ- uh, circulation, um, that's the, that would be the goal for future development. In terms of KFC, I don't, I don't have an answer for, you know, what we can.
Yeah, I, it, it was, it was just a, it was just a thought, I, I mean, you know, because I know that that's, uh, you know, whoever owns that complex, you know, the park, you know, the parking lot, but it was just, uh, because I know things get kind of cuckywampus down there sometimes, though.
Yeah, so I mean, we can require them to delineate what the, the, the parking stacking lane is, that kind of a thing, so we can do that, um. We ran into, this really came up as an issue when we did PICO's, which still is for me not we, we had to work with what we had because we didn't really have standards that we could apply to it. But it just kind of highlighted how important it is for us to have, you know, a, a good clear set of standards, or other places like I noticed that little coffee stand Cafe Elite. There's basically no, I mean, you can only really go in on one side of it, the other side, you know, one car in there and it's pretty much bull, so. I mean, it will create like for that little coffee stand, you know, they were, and then now we would probably say you can't put it there, so it will create some restrictions on what people.
I think given, given the number of new businesses and the demand that's coming in and the population's coming in, it's just a good idea to have these now.
Oh, yeah.
It's, we're going to have to, yeah, what do we do with the old set? But, um, but this at least addresses all the new, the new things that are coming.
This is us moving into the big time.
Yes.
You know, drive-throughs are not going any.
Used to be stacking was one, now it's.
And then, uh, lastly, we have all the definitions to, and I close the loop on all the new language. Are there any, any additional questions?
So is there a specific significance to the live-work structure word? I, I noticed that was talked about a few times. Is that specific to our code, is it? Does that term mean something?
Uh, in terms of the definition, I believe I took it from the Webster's Dictionary, uh.
It's not an uncommon thing, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Trying to provide, you know, opportunities through, I don't know, like maybe a night watchman that just lives on the property, you're providing them housing.
Right.
It's just one more way to get at some extra housing.
Okay.
It's very common in cities such as Chicago, New York. And we're not there, yeah.
Even, even in Lacey, they, they've got a, a number of those in Lacey that, you know, so it's not necessarily just big cities, it's you know.
So I did want to say, you know, this works pretty much all Andrew, he's the one that's been putting all this together, a little bit of feedback from the rest of us, but, um, so.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Good work.
A lot of good work.
Glad to have you.
Back.
Yeah, for the second round two.
So whose idea was it to update the code?
Well, it also get kind of, again, kicked off with the tempers property and. We started on one thing and then while we're in one thing, it's all right, well, since this chapter is open, we might as well. Take a look at this one and it just kind of, it was like dominoes, um, once one started moving, it just set off a chain reaction and. Uh, found it a really good time to address multiple things.
And I, I don't know if I've shared it before, I think I have, but we keep an on, uh, running what we call code changes table, so whenever we're sitting in a meeting or whatever and we say, oh, that's not working. Or we don't have a standard for that or whatever. It's like go into the code changes table and put it in there as a placeholder, so.
That's very innovative and.
There.
Continue doing it.
Yeah, yeah, it's never ending, it's a never ending thing, you know, so. Um, and, uh, on the residential side, Clayton has been tasked with doing something similar to this too, so.
I have a quick question, um, to. To do a motion to, um, approve these. To go on to city council for approval, do we need to close the? The open meeting first to do that, or do we do it during the open meeting?
Close the hearing.
Yeah, we close, but. I think I do that first.
Okay.
And then I ask if there's anyone.
Okay, we'll do that. I appreciate it.
Any further questions, any more questions? Anyone else? Very well, I will close the public hearing at four thirty one. Do I hear a motion to close the meeting? Very.
I made the motion to close it. Okay, great.
Very well, I hear a second.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone against? Not heard. The hearing is closed now, uh, we want to be able to send these changes to the city council. So we must then. Uh, vote on whether or not to do that, correct?
Correct.
I'd submit a motion.
Very well.
That we recommend these changes to our, um. Unified Development Code. That were submitted to us today. Um, and we approve those to, and recommend them to city council for approval.
Give me a second.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, I gotta catch up.
All those in favor, say aye please.
Aye, aye.
Any against, not heard? The motion has passed to submit the changes to the, uh, universal. Title eighteen universal unified development code, title eighteen to the council. Very well. Do I, uh, let's see here, let's go on to our next item, which is a subcommittee reports, our agenda item number ten. Any subcommittee reports from anybody?
Well, I do know that there's been a tremendous amount happening in the city lately.
Uh huh.
All kinds of events at, um, the city park. Things have been really, really, uh, active lately, and in addition to that, there was a, uh, town hall meeting. I remember which evening it was, I think it was just Tuesday or a few days ago, uh, that we had that, um. And that was very well attended. It's quite a few people, uh, getting to see all the projects that are underway, um, a lot of transportation projects, but also. Um, one project that. Uh, suggested that we've renamed that project, if I can bring it up. Is, and to rename it as creating a plaza out of the alleyway. Um, it was called. Articulate or?
Activated alley.
Created alleyway, and people, the intended, you really understand what that meant. But, um, but others came up and said, oh, it is a plaza, yeah, so. That's something that, that occurred, but there were a lot of people. And it was, I think, very well received. And they're probably going to be looking for another one, of course, you belong, there's enough projects that are happening, particularly on the transportation side.
You know, on that note, um, and we have, I think it was Pat that came in here and talked about projects, but there were lots of. Good illustrations of the projects that are underway, we could maybe bring those to a future meeting, so you could just sort of see what the roundabout's going to look like, what the alleyway is going to actually look like. Um, so maybe we'll think about putting that on the.
And possibly a few. Uh, some of the things that were discussed there, if we could bring those up, um. Annexations and the new developments, the housing developments and such, there was a document that was provided to us a while back. Closer to the first of the year that showed, you know, what was planned, and now there's things underway. And a number of areas.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I guess I should, I didn't think to bring this up, but we, Cody and I did meet with the county last week to talk about what would be a pretty ambitious annexation proposal for. Probably six of our UGA areas in the future, so. We're trying to make it so that Yelm doesn't look like this, you know, we want it to look like that, so. Be quite a few properties that would come in on that.
Do, do you have that available that you can shoot me, or is it something that you, you'll?
I definitely can, I mean, we're still trying to hammer out with the county what we think that should look like. But probably by next meeting, we'll have an idea of what, what we want to do, so I can bring that at the next meeting.
Any other subcommittee reports?
Store commission will start meeting again next month, so we're going to discuss a little bit about the contents of the museum. They'll be on display at the community center from October to December in celebration of the centennial. And then the tree board will start meeting again next month, and we'll start laying out what our theme and what our plan is for Arbor Day. Um, Arbor Day is, the Arbor Day celebration is a funny creature because it started outside. And a lot of times in April, the weather isn't on our side, so now we have the building that we, we use the community center to have it inside. There's a push to kind of have it back outside against weather permitting. We're kind of deciding what that's going to.
Smooth tiers quickly and something.
Exactly, and if the weather was anything like it was this last weekend, that's going to be. Yeah, those two commissions will start getting active, uh, they take, you know, breaks in the summertime and. Store commission, I believe, meets, or a tree board meets six times a year as opposed to twelve, so or ten.
Our mission is almost done. They have trees going in everywhere.
Very well, any other subcommittee reports? Hearing none, hear a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Hold on, hold on a second.
A second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of opposed?